And we're preparing a more complete presentation of our analysis and evaluation of the situation for presentation at the June 18 meeting. Would any members like to make any comment on the topic at the moment?
I think in any of these, what we really need to think about as a board is our goals. Because sometimes we get lost in the weeds of language. So for instance, with short-term rentals, do we need a definition? Do we need to regulate existing STRs like they do in OSPE? Do we need to prevent new STRs from happening or put a moratorium on them because they're eating up our housing stock? I think if we generally could discuss those issues, then we could figure out what the words are.
Yeah, certainly that would be useful. One of the issues we face is whether we're able to do all of those things in a legally defensible way. Looking at the OSPE and ALTON regulations, for example, certainly they've put those in place. It remains to be seen whether they'll be challenged the way that the regulations were in Conway.
Well, we can't wait forever.
No, no, can't wait forever. That's right. And they may never be challenged.
Right.
Whether they're defensible or not, they may never be challenged. You know, I've gone through the OSPE ones myself, and I saw a couple of issues, not necessarily with their ability in general, but you know, one obvious example is in the OSPE regulation, paragraph 22 dot 4 dot 4 states, "removal of trash." And that's it. It's three words. It doesn't say anything about what to do about removal of trash. So there are a few sections of their ordinance that is similar. I expect the intent is good, but the execution is another matter.
And I'm not sure that we want to allow them in every district, for instance.
That's right. I don't know that we do. The other thing I noted in the OSPE ordinance is that paragraph 22 point 4 point 2 restricts the number of occupants to two per bedroom plus two. And it doesn't distinguish between overnight or daytime occupants. So if they want to have a party and have 10 people over, perhaps that's not permitted according to their ordinance.
I think that somewhere else it says you cannot have events. Having read through it, "special events shall not be used for special events." So I don't know.
No, no, I understand special events, but if I have a short-term rental and I want to have my grandfather over for a day, and he's the seventh person.
Yeah. Well, I think as long as he follows all the laws.
That may be, but again, that's not the way it's written here. So I want to make sure that ours is airtight should we get there.
But I wonder if we're all in agreement about those concepts? That we have existing short-term rentals, we need to figure out a way to get them permitted and have them follow the current laws. And we need to define what it is. We've, you know, short and sweet, I think, is good. And then we need to either, at least moratorium, the creation of new STRs. That is my opinion of what we're trying to do. And I just wonder if other people have different ideas.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that we distinguish between zoning permitting and enforcement. Certainly, everybody in town is required to abide by the current ordinances, but enforcing that's another issue.
And right now, the subcommittee is trying to get some legal guidance on what we can and can't do and how it might be the best way to accomplish that. But I think the points you've initially listed are pretty much what we're looking at.
So if the attorney ends up saying, "Well, ALTON will be challenged," don't we at least want to have something in place to be challenged instead of just riding down this road that we're on?
I think we want to have what has the best chance of being sustained. Just because a town is getting its ordinance appealed, that isn't a legal basis. You don't know whether they're going to be successful or not, and that's not a legal basis for not proceeding. But we're trying to get, you know, so we have the best chance of having what we do succeed.
Yeah, but we can't predict that, can we?
Well, you can make an educated guess, maybe.
Can I add something to that list of wants and thoughts? There seems to also be two different kinds of thoughts going on with the short-term rental thing. One in my mind is that you've got, you know, the family home that you rent out, or your summer home that you rent out for a couple of weeks. And then there's the other one where some corporation from somewhere else comes in and buys up the neighborhood and runs it as if it is a motel hotel situation with never a thought of having an owner occupied space there. I think those are two separate animals. The first one's been going on forever, ever and ever. The second one is kind of new, and that's where the life safety stuff doesn't work. The first one would be like, okay, we're, you know, going to rent it to the neighbor's children when they come up, and it's going to be another family, and the life safety stuff all matches. But the other ones, you know, when you're overrunning a small house with 20 people staying there, and fire isn't up to code, and you ruined the septic system, and parking on the neighbor's lawn, that sort of thing, that's another animal that isn't something that we really want.
Julie, I agree with you, but again, we need to distinguish between how we can control that through zoning or through ordinances other than zoning. You know, trash on the neighbor's lawn certainly isn't a zoning issue.
Oh, no, but parking on the neighbor's lawn is.
I'm not sure that it's a zoning issue. It's, I would say it's a civil issue, certainly.
A civil issue.
But not a zoning issue. Certainly, it needs to be addressed. I'm not sure that the planning board has the ability to do that. So I believe on Thursday, the 13th, the subcommittee will be meeting again to review some of these issues and prepare a presentation for display before the public at the June 18 meeting. If anybody from the public or the other members of the planning board would like to have input, I'd welcome it. You can certainly send it to the planner, and they'll distribute it to whomever it needs to be distributed to. If there are no other comments for short-term rental, we'll move on to the next topic, which is the conservation subdivision discussion. Not sure who would like to lead that, but we had some discussion internally with some of the planning board members previously of the difficulty of having that implemented and how it might be challenging for property owners to abide by the conservation subdivision while still successfully developing their properties.
It would be good if Vaughn could give her thoughts, I think.
It's really the same set of thoughts. As a board, I think we should figure out what our goal is. Is our goal to encourage the premise that's set forward in the first page, all the purposes of a conservation subdivision? And those all seem like good things. So I doubt that we're going to have trouble with that. And then the next thing is how to make a formula simple to figure out how to figure out how many units, for instance, you come up with. And the state has guidance, pretty specific guidance, and it also is very similar to what our subdivision regulations say, which is you subtract any slope greater than 25% very poorly. This is straight from subdivision. And in the case of the state's recommendations for percent deduction for roads and utilities, anything from five to 10 acres is 5%. And I think just putting a simple formula forward and not complicating it by using lot size by soil type, which is, the lot size is undetermined in this. It's however small you would like to make it. You know, it could be, well, there's lots of different ways to do this. So I think that we should proceed with just our general concepts. Is that going to work? And then figure out the language. And also, did we intend to preclude regular subdivisions? Because I think that last draft did. You had to do a conservation subdivision and, you know, make sure 50% of was common area, open land. And I don't think that was intended when we set out to fix the conservation subdivision. So that...
Well, that was in the current regulations. That's where that came from currently. There are certain exemptions, and actually, this draft is slightly less restrictive than what is in the current regulations.
But it's...
But that, I mean, that's the question. Do we want to have exemptions, or do you want to have it as an alternate amid? The issues that I understand you've raised are, one is the density calculation and the exemption, I think. And I mean, I think the rest of this, you know, we worked on, and I think we pretty much had agreement. If there are other things that we need to touch on, we can, but I think that, you know, if those are the issues, that's what we should address.
So I think we should have, like the state suggests, a simple formula. And some benefits, I think we have some benefits for affordable housing. There were a couple of things that we threw in on top of that. I don't think that's a problem. But I think we ought to have a formula that makes simple sense.
Yeah, I tried to find the planning guide, and I could not find that. I did look at the innovative land use planning techniques, which also had a formula, and to the extent you see, you know, I'm not wedded to, you know, high-intensity soil surveys. I just want a way that, you know, we take into account wetlands, steep slopes, very poorly drained soils. And I looked at what the innovative land use planning techniques had, which spelled it out in one way, whether that's, I think a formula is better than the yield.
Yeah, the yield is based on strange things.
And it seems like you're doing the work twice instead of once.
You're making them spend money on engineering for a project you're never going to do.
Yes. But I think those are the main issues, and, you know, if we can agree on that, I think we're...
Well, I thought maybe what we should do is follow this, our own subdivision regulations, so that the cluster, or whatever we're calling it, conservation subdivision, is mimics what we do with regular lots. And that is subtract slopes over 25%, and you can find this in the subdivision regulations, and very poorly drained soils. The only thing in addition was a percentage for roads and utilities. And I just pulled that number from the New Hampshire planning guide, but I mean...
Yeah, the innovative land use thing had a different formula, but...
Or we could say something like a percentage or actual right-of-way, you know? If that ends up being greater than that subtracted, it'll keep the roads shorter. So, and I don't think our intent originally was to eliminate subdivisions of the generally normal time kind that we've had here. If that was in the original conservation subdivision language, nobody's ever paid attention to it, because we've had a lot of subdivisions done the normal way over the years. And it's never come up that that wasn't allowed.
Well, there are, you know, you have to have a certain number of acres, and you have to have a certain number of lots, and you can't add more certain number of dwellings, What does everybody think?
I mean, yeah, this isn't just Roger and Vaughn's opinions. What else do we have here?
Didn't you talk about open space and the use of it? You had an example of a project in Bedford.
Could you bring the mic closer?
You had an example of a project in Bedford that they used the septic system for playing fields and so forth, so it was a, it would ease that some...
So in the case of Bedford, you know, we can look at different ordinances, you could put community systems in the open spaces. You could count, you know, the perimeter buffer as open space, or you could put it on lots. I mean, maybe we should all discuss what we think, but the current idea seems to be we need a buffer to the lot lines that surround the whole property, so that the neighbors aren't aware of this, you know, thing in the backyard somewhere. And then all the open land that is not privately owned is conservation land, except for the right-of-ways. And the 25% steep slope probably mostly ends up in the open space, and probably all the wetlands that we want to protect end up in the open space.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of having septic systems in the open space, or leach fields in the open space, and I'm not in favor of, at least at this point, active outdoor recreation uses. And that, the innovative land use techniques does, offers a consideration that with a special permit, you can put a well there. I think we could discuss that, but I would not be in favor of locating leach fields in the open space. It's supposed to be undisturbed and, and be protecting the natural resources, and I don't think a septic, a leach field fits in with that.
So in the old-fashioned New England planning, and what that subdivision I showed you was designed around were old towns, there were common areas that were in the center of a group of houses around them, like a town green. And in one instance, it was soccer field on a leach field. That's sort of typical New England planning. I mean, I know if you're looking at clusters like Grape Lake planning, it may be a little different, but I think we should allow for the New England-type greens that are not necessarily untouched, but common.
And would the soccer field in your example be considered open space?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
I disagree with it.
Why?
I don't think that's the purpose of the open space. And I think, you know, you'll talk about Bedford. Bedford's got, what, 23,000-plus people, and I don't think it's comparable to Wolfboro.
So when Randall O'Rent, the guy who wrote the book and came to Brewster to talk about this and gave us all the exercises to do with parcels of land, the parcel that he gave an example of was a farm. And in order to preserve the view into the farm, most of us designed it so that the houses were around that open space tucked into the woods. But that open space preserved a bucolic farm look that is common to Wolfboro, not Bedford, but let's say you're preserving open fields. That's not an untouched thing. I imagine it will still be mowed. And that was what was promoted, and I can bring that book if anybody wants it. I've got it.
Well, Vaughn, I would say, getting back to your original thought of identifying the goals, part of that, I suppose, is for us to come to an agreement on what we think the definition of open space should be.
Yep.
Right.
And right now, I would be fine with adding agricultural cultivation along with forest management and pastures. That comes out of the innovative land use techniques.
I'm sorry, Roger, I couldn't hear you.
I would be fine. Right now, we have forest management, trails for passive, non-motorized use, snowmobile trails, and I would be fine with adding agricultural cultivation and pastures, which is one of the ones listed in innovative land use planning techniques, which would allow you to have a hay field, which I think people view as open space. Certainly, if you're doing a conservation easement, it's open space.
So, I mean, a hay field and a leach field, you know?
They're not remotely similar.
They can be.
Not with a conservation easement, they can't.
Well, that's because you're making rules about them.
Well, I want to make a rule about that here.
Well, that's the goal of this discussion, is to find out what rules we're going to have.
Yeah.
That's right.
Maybe we should get back to starting with, well, exemptions is the first section numerically. We can go through it in sequence.
I don't know. I think we, general concepts are a good place to start, instead of getting into the language, because we have to agree on what we would like to do before we can talk about what the sentences say.
Yeah, we need to know...
We already talked about that. I mean, we've got outlined here a proposal, and it seems to me we're going backwards if we want to have some discussion about what we're trying to do. I think we put together something that we thought was what we wanted to do, and certain things...
We didn't.
There's certain items. It was a committee, and...
I was on that committee, and I didn't agree with you, and what I thought never got into the document.
You didn't agree with me on high-intensity soil surveys, which I believe was the only thing you didn't agree with me on, and then you...
And the ratio, I mean, the, what the formula is.
That's the density calculation, which is the formula, which we did not agree on.
Yes.
And that would be the next topic, if we start with exemptions, I believe.
How would other people like to proceed? I don't think we're going to proceed.
Any comments from anybody else on the board?
I'd just say that my thought approaching this, too, would be to have this conservation subdivision regulations be in addition to the standard subdivision regulations that we have now, so that developer has the option, depending on, you know, what the property has to offer, what the vision is for the subdivision to look like. You know, some property developers might want to see more land around the homes, they have more privacy, you know, with a larger lot or something like that, as opposed to a cluster type. So my opinion would be to have both of them as an option, so they can, you know, look and choose which one would fit their idea, what the subdivision would be, you know, to their liking, and to do their presentation based on that. I think we'd have to obviously get into work, the details out of, you know, the definitions of, you know, the open space, what's allowed, I know what's not allowed, things like that. We have to delve into, you know, more discussions about how the property is used on the open, on this conservation subdivision for the open land and stuff, but, you know, I think to, you know, get the concept down of the direction we want to go, and then, you know, dig into the meat of the thing there and develop it after that.
Yeah, it's my understanding, though, that at the moment, the conservation subdivision is written such a way that it is not optional.
Right.
It's mandatory.
Right.
So you're suggesting a change to that.
Right.
Yeah.
And actually, it's, it may be a change, but it's been operating that way for years. You can still do a, well, supposedly, until we started talking about it, a standard subdivision. I mean, you can do acre and a half lots, you can do five-acre lots, as long as you put the roads in. That's what's been happening here for years. This is an option.
Yep. The majority of the subdivisions that have been coming in have been three or fewer lots to avoid going this conservation route.
Right.
The point, I raise that because there's no incentive for someone to do conservation.
Right.
Actually, a disincentive.
That's how it's coming across to the developers, yeah.
And unfortunately, what we end up, sorry?
Or landowners, I shouldn't say developers. Developers are definitely not interested in conservation subdivision, but the landowners see no incentive to go that direction either.
And what we end up with is chopped up three lots on the frontage, and that is not necessarily what we want. I mean, we've seen that throughout town, all these little lots right on the main roads, and it may be better to have some distance from the road and a feeder road into a community.
Certainly, that would, I think, be more in the flavor of Wolfboro.
Yeah.
Okay, so is everybody in favor of keeping subdivision as well as this and not having this a mandatory? Is that what people are saying?
I don't think we've gotten that feeling.
Okay, well, I'm just trying, well, it is a question.
Yeah, so I would say, what are the, what is the answer for each of us to Kathy's question as to whether the conservation subdivision should be mandatory or optional?
Well, I would make a motion
Yeah.
...that it's optional, that we can still have standard subdivisions.
Okay, I'll second that.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I have one point of discussion, and I'm in favor of the motion, but if people are not using conservation subdivisions now when it's mandatory, why are they going to do it in the future?
Because we're trying to fix it.
Right, we're trying to make it simpler.
People are looking at the requirements of conservation subdivision and then waning or weaning their project back, waxing, waning, whichever way you want to go, scaling the project back to meet one of the exemptions to not touch it. So it's not that it's not being used, it's just not being executed. People are finding an exemption way out of it, which, to Roger's point, does get easier with this. You say three lots, you're done.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the whole reason that we started working on this is because it's not working the way it's written.
Right.
And we were trying to find a way to simplify, to make it more enticing, so that in some places, you know, we're conserving open space, wetlands, slopes, farms, whatever we're trying to conserve, and allowing for development.
So, Taffes, I'd ask you, from a procedural standpoint, are we as a board able at this point to say that we prefer it to be optional? Does that require change to our ordinances?
Well, to this one, it would...
Yeah, it would require a town meeting vote if we were to...
Well, if you were going to move conservation subdivision out of the regulation into the subdivision regulations, that would be a vote, yes, because you'd be moving a section from the town regulations.
So we'd need a warrant article.
Doesn't prevent you from putting it into the subdivision regulations, but I think the more restrictive would still be the ordinance. So if the planning board proposed, it's been a long week, proposed that, and that warrant article failed, conservation would still stay in the ordinance and take control over the planning board's move to put it in subdivision regs.
So I wonder, I'm just trying to think of the most recent subdivision. A road went in and it was subdivided. If we didn't have conservation subdivision on the books then? You don't know, you weren't here, but, you know, I'm just trying to think of a recent subdivision.
Any, any number of ways. So, for example, I met with a gentleman yesterday afternoon who was scared to death. He came in and he said, "Do I have to do a conservation subdivision? I'm trying to create one lot so my son can build, but I'm in a minimum three-acre zone, and I have 38 acres." So by definition, conservation subdivision would be required.
No.
But there's an exemption in the current regs.
And the exemption is what?
Three or fewer lots.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's slightly different than that.
I would not be in favor of taking conservation subdivision out of the zoning ordinance, but I interpret Kathy's motion as basically saying we would delete section 175, 148. And amend 175, 149, so it doesn't say shall be required, but say shall be permitted in.
So to answer Vaughn's question, the exemption that the individual qualified under, let's see, some people are going to want the whole thing, 175, 148B, which is the exemption criteria. So 175, 148B4, the subdivision will not create more than one additional lot accommodating one dwelling unit, and no other lots have been created from the parcel within the preceding seven-year period.
So it's seven, every seven years, you can divide off one, sorry?
Yes, that was not lost on him either.
Yeah.
But that particular lot had a number of things that would preclude standard subdivision as well.
Yeah.
Wiley Brook being one of them.
Okay, can we, can we vote on the motion?
So, yeah, if there's no more discussion, we can vote on the motion.
Yeah, I just have one question now about the motion. Are we talking about deleting the exemption provision and changing the requirement they be permitted in certain... the exemption provision and changing the requirement they be permitted in certain residential, be required in certain residential districts?
The standard subdivision?
No, we get rid of the exemptions in Section 175, 148, and then Section 175, 149, which now reads, "A conservation subdivision shall be required in," lists the districts, and we would change that so it would read, "shall be permitted." That's basically the gist of the motion, as I understand it.
Would you say that's right, Kathy? Do you agree with Roger's description?
I'm sorry, I was focusing on the next issue that I was going to bring up.
Sorry.
Can you repeat it so we understand it down here?
I'm sorry?
You repeat it so we can understand it down here.
Yeah, that's right. Repeat it.
We would delete Section 175, 148, which lists the exemptions, and then we would amend Section 175, 149, so that instead of it reading, "A conservation subdivision shall be required in jail residential, rural residential, and residential agricultural zoning districts," it would read, "shall be permitted."
Shall be permit, yes, I agree with that. That would work.
And then we'd get rid of the parcel size triggering. So we'd basically say, "We don't need exemptions because we're not requiring it."
I think that's right, Roger. Kathy, do you agree?
Yes.
So that makes it so that they could choose which subdivision kind they want and qualify for, correct?
And hopefully, we'll continue to work on the conservation version to make it more amenable.
Right.
Well, we do offer some incentives for affordable, and there's another one. Can't think of what it is, but anyway, we do.
Well, I think if you make it a simple formula, and we have a list of what you're allowed to do in the open space, that would go a long way toward making it simpler.
Right.
Any more discussion?
I guess I would just ask, Roger, is that comment you made, especially adding that word permitted in the 175, 149, is that, would that be an amendment to the motion that you'd offer so that gets included in the motion, or is that more just a comment for us to look at when we go through the ordinance?
Is that included in your motion, Kathy? I took Kathy's motion to mean that was what we were going to do, or proposing to do, that we would get rid of the exemptions because we weren't requiring it, and we would permit it in those districts, which is what's currently proposed, and so it would be optional. You could do it, or you could do a conventional.
Yeah, I get the intent and stuff. I just didn't know if you wanted to actually include that actual verbiage in the, to be in the motion. That's what I was getting at.
I mean, I.
I guess that would be up to Kathy, as it was her motion.
Well, I mean, it seems to make sense, as long as we're still talking about conventional subdivision and the conservation subdivision.
So really changing the word to permitted?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then you would delete the minimum lot size and the parcel size triggering, which is the balance of 175, 149.
I get it, yeah.
I think we're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
There might be some trickle-down impacts of that.
I'm sorry?
There might be some trickle-down impacts of that.
I suppose there might. We'll have to look at that in greater detail.
Well, what's jumping to mind is instead of having minimum lot size and parcel size triggering, I'm wondering if the board might want, we'll have to work through this numerically to see if it works, but it might be permitted on lots having at least X acres.
Okay.
Because putting in multifamily or anything under the innovative land use on a one-acre lot, bad example, 10-acre lot, may not work. You may not be able to have 50% of a 10-acre lot and still be able to meet what everyone's talking about with open space and the setbacks and everything else.
Would you be good enough to come up perhaps with some examples over the next week or so?
Yeah, I think as we go through it, we're just going to have to make a note of everything and then see if it actually works.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty much it just flipped upside down, so now some things are just going to be upside down. They're not going to work. So we're not done with it yet.
I mean, this is already 180 degrees from where this started, because it's now become an option, not a requirement.
Wonderful thing about discussions.
All right, I would expect that, at least for this evening, that would conclude the conservation.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We still have to decide what can be in the open space.
Ah, yes.
And what is the.
And the formula.
Yeah.
What about density?
So that's the formula.
That's what I just said, the formula.
Yeah, part of the formula.
For density.
So what I did, I believe I found the document that Vaughn is pointing to that Roger said he couldn't find, and I sent a link to everyone, so you can have some light reading when you get home. If you want to look at that, I can try and come up with some examples. This is what the current model would be. This is what the state model would do and how that impacts land differently, so the board could consider it at a later date. I don't think you're going to be able to talk through it and have it line up. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Just some homework, I guess.
Okay, so we're going, that's what we're going to deal with, with open space and the density issue.
Well, you can talk about what's allowed in the open space.
Yeah, okay.
Because I don't think that would change necessarily.
That was one thing we were, people were talking about.
Sure, so.
It would be good if we could get that cleared up.
Let's go ahead. So what's the current definition, or what's currently included?
Not really a definition in the regulation. Let me jump over to.
Well, we did talk about it, because Roger mentioned open-spaced lands that may be used for forest management trails, snowmobile trails.
Snowmobile trails.
So in 175, 175, which is the definitions or terms and word use, open space is as follows. Open space performs a necessary or desirable function in relation to the adjoining residential use and may include, among other similar areas, recreational areas, playgrounds, and undeveloped land, but excluding land with slopes in excess of 25% and wetlands is defined in 175, 175.
So the wetlands are excluded from open space?
In the definitions in the zoning regulations, yes.
Wow.
But conservation, well, there's a couple of things that don't balance between the subdivision regulations and the conservation subdivision. The subdivision regulations, you're allowed to include areas of steep slope in excess of 25% as long as you have 20,000 other square feet on your parcel.
That's in our own.
That's in the subdivision regulations. In conservation, you have the definition of net development density that takes out very poorly drained soils, anything north of 15% slopes. Then, remember, you subtract 20% of the difference for roads, and then you calculate lot size.
Lot size, lot number.
Well, then you, well, no, you calculate.
The number of lots you're allowed, the density you're allowed.
Yeah, right.
Well, whatever you can hiss for, basically.
Well, we're not hissing anything, I don't think.
Well, if we're going to change hiss in conservation, we also need to change hiss in subdivision, which is fine.
No, 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 we don't. So in standard subdivisions, where you're putting a well and septic system on the lot, hiss does make sense. That's what it's designed for, is your soil adequate. When you're not putting the leach field on the lot, and maybe not the well, who knows, then it doesn't make sense.
I agree with you.
But.
But what I'm saying is, the draft in front of you, going back to the density question, you calculate the net development density, you determine the maximum density through hiss requirements of the subdivision regulations, then you determine the maximum density under the different zoning districts, and then you take the lesser density of A through C above, and that's what your density is.
That's the old conservation subdivision.
That's the current draft that everyone has in front of them.
Right, right.
So hiss is still the controlling number.
Yeah, and I think that that's not a good thing.
Correct.
In my opinion, it doesn't make sense.
I'm agreeing that I understand what you're saying. I'm not making a statement on his map right now.
It's also just costing whoever's doing this a lot of money that is of no use. To figure out a lot with a septic and a well on it and then compare it to something that's not like that at all is just not sensical.
So, I mean, there's a couple of things. Open space in conservation subdivision includes wetland and steep. That's not the same in the subdivision regulations. The definition of open space says that wetlands aren't open space, but in conservation, you're required to put it in and count it as open space. So there's a couple of checks and balances that need to go through. I'm not saying you're going down the wrong path with conservation subdivision, but once we're done with that, we need to go back to the subdivision and make sure it balances, because the equation's not equal right now. Well, now currently, and currently as drafted.
Right. Unless we call it something different, like not open space.
Right, or change the definition of net development density to actually have the slopes match subdivision regulations.
Right. Which is 25% slopes and very poorly.
No. Net development density is a mathematical formula intended to represent the build-out density of attractive land by using conventional development practices. Net development density equals total tract square footage minus square foot area of very poorly drained soils minus square foot area of slopes greater than 15 to 20% of the square foot area of the remaining land. Then you subtract, I'm sorry, of slopes greater than 15%, then subtract 20% of the remaining land for roads. So standard subdivision, you can count above 25% as your land area for density or lot size as long as you have a balance of non-steep. But net, conservation subdivision says you subtract all the slopes greater than 15%.
And in standard subdivision, it's between 15 and 20?
No, the 20 is, it's over 15.
Okay, so where are we with the density? Because it seems like we need two additional things. We need a definition of open space that is very clear as to what people can and cannot put in the open space, and then we need to get this density thing cleared up.
Well, if you change the definition of open space, you're going to have another warrant article to change the definition in the zoning regulations, but you could call it reserved land or something else.
That would be less confusing, perhaps.
Well, it keeps the number of articles down that have to go concurrently.
And then the formula for standard subdivisions, you subtract 20% for roads. That's because there are much.
Conservation subdivision, you subtract 20%.
The current conservation subdivision, yeah.
And as drafted, yes.
Okay.
Where does that 20% come from?
The definition of net development density.
Is that a state regulation?
So the state recommended.
That's what the town adopted. That's the only way to answer that.
Five to 10 acres, 5%, 1.5 to 4.5 acres, 10%, one acre or less, 15%, which we're never going to have anything less than an acre.
Okay, it seems that this definition needs to be in this ordinance, the definition of open space.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the open space definition in our ordinances currently, reads that it performs a necessary or desirable function in relation to the adjoining residential use and may include recreational areas, playgrounds, and undeveloped land. So as Tavas pointed out, perhaps rather than redefining or open space, we should use a different term such as reserved land, and that would avoid a conflict or having to redefine the existing term.
How about conserved land? Because we're doing conservation.
Or conservation land or conserved land.
Vaughn, that's a good suggestion.
Conserved land.
As long as it doesn't get confused with a conservation easement, because we're not requiring a conservation easement on this land. It just has to be not built.
Conserved land.
It is kind of effectively. It ends up being effectively a conservation easement somewhat because it's.
Well, I was just listening to earlier conversations about saying, oh, conservation easement, you can't have leach fields.
Okay, all right.
And you have that stewardship fund and all sorts of other things.
I still think we need the definition of open space in this ordinance, just for clarity.
Well, are we calling it open space in conservation subdivisions, or is it changing to conserved land?
Well, if we do change it to conserved land, we still need to define what that is.
Yeah.
Right.
But it could be defined in here.
That's right.
Yeah.
Separate from the rest of the ordinances.
I think it might be difficult to define it until you come to a collective decision on what's allowed in it.
We just have, K now is open space. Aren't you just changing that then to conserved land?
Yes, but the conversation is, what is the definition of conserved land? Does it need an opening statement before the things that are allowed in it?
Right. Could it still be rec areas, playgrounds, undeveloped lands, trails, non-motorized vehicular space, agricultural lands, all the things that are listed?
That are not listed.
Maybe we should come up with a list of all the possibles and go through one by one and vote on whether or not that should be included or excluded.
We could do that. Well, I would suggest that we perhaps come up with a list rather than voting on each one. Let's try to come up with a list and see if we can come to an agreement and then vote to approve that list.
Sure, yeah.
I think as we do that, we should keep in mind that it is always easier to relax a restriction than it is to try and restrict it once it's in place and the consequences have not been fully understood.
Well, we also need to keep in mind that we're trying to make this attractive.
We're also trying to preserve undeveloped land.
Yes, I think you can do all of the above.
Yeah, we're getting back now to the goals discussion.
Yeah, right.
Well, I guess an easy way to ask the question is, is it the board's goal to prevent structures and conserve land?
What do you mean by a structure?
Well, we have the town definition of structure.
So then we need to.
Which reaches debate at times, but is a gazebo or a soccer goal. Barbecue pit, fire pit, swimming pool, septic tank. I'm just throwing out ideas to try and get the board thinking about, in your mind, when somebody says, "Conserve land," that somebody's not allowed to build in, what are they allowed to do with it?
That was the list of things that we, you know, my, recreation areas, playgrounds, undeveloped land, trails, non-motorized pathways, agricultural lands. That's what I came up with.
Right.
And I came up with forest management. And I came up with forest management, agricultural cultivation, and pass, just passive, non-motorized trails and recreational uses, snowmobile trails, that's my list.
So Roger, is there any conflict between snowmobile trails and non-motorized?
The difference here is that motor, snowmobile trails run on snow, so they do not cause the impact on the terrain that ATV would run in on dirt. And that's, and we also have networks of snowmobile trails that, you know, they, in theory, the ground's frozen and it's protected. That's not the case if you have dirt bikes or ATVs running on bare ground.
What do you-
So you would include-
Roger, what do you mean by recreation use? I mean-
Well, that's an interesting question. I would say that it's passive trails and recreational uses, so I would not say a tennis court, swimming pool, soccer field.
Well, that's what we need to call it then is passive. Because a recreation use could be a swimming pool, could be a baseball diamond.
Okay.
Then you're getting into, you just excluded, you just made two groups here. You made things you're doing by yourself, things you're doing as a neighborhood group, when you just did that. You can hike with one other person on the trail, or you can have a soccer game.
I would be in favor of, you know, playing fields, soccer fields. It would also be valuable to conserve wetlands and steep slopes and any kind of agricultural view, maybe a view shed that's important.
Well, the current definition of structure in 175-175, "That which is built or constructed with a fixed location on the ground or attached to something having a fixed location on the ground. Structures include but are not limited to a building, swimming pool, billboard, pier, septic system, parking space/parking lot, and deck. It shall not include a minor installation such as a fence under six feet high, a mailbox, or a flagpole." So if you use the definition of structure, septic is out.
And I don't think we want all of those things anyway.
Somebody asked what a structure was, that's what a structure is.
Somebody was kind enough just to share with me the New York State definition of open space, which generally refers to land that is undeveloped or lightly developed for uses other than agriculture. It says, "Open space is land that is not intensively developed for residential, commercial, industrial, or institutional use. It includes agriculture and forest land, undeveloped shorelines, undeveloped scenic lands, public parks and preserves. It also includes water bodies such as lakes and bays. What is defined as open space depends in part on its surroundings. A vacant lot, community garden, or small marsh can be open space in a big city. A narrow corridor or pathway for walking or bicycling is open space even though it is surrounded by developed area."
So are we dictating it's public?
No, I think it's saying it can be public, I don't think it's required to be.
Some places do density bonuses if it's-
Public.
Public, yeah. So you don't, the town doesn't have a definition of recreational, it does have a definition of recreational use, balance this out with structure. Outdoor activities that are operated by an entity other than a unit of government and which are available for use usually for a fee, including but not limited to golf courses, ice skating rinks, tennis courts, cross-country ski trails, and the rental of non-motorized sports equipment, but excluding games and activities common to amusement parks and arcades.
Okay, well, all of those that you just read are not passive, right?
Yeah, I would go back to trails for passive, non-motorized use. I think that's getting too expansive. And if you have a trail for passive, non-motorized use, that means you can cross-country ski, you can hike, presumably you can ride a bicycle on it.
Can you only cross-country ski on the trail? Or can you cross-country ski anywhere in the conserved land?
I would say you can cross-country ski anywhere on the conserved land, it's-
I'm only asking if there needs to be consideration of something that's not trail-oriented. Forest management, obviously not a trail thing, agricultural conservation is not on a trail. But I'm wondering if passive use, for example, trails or other, so under 6C now, because I put agricultural conservation or cultivation in there, I'm just wondering if passive recreation including-
But the reason you have trails there is because that involves construction and impacting something. If somebody's just out bushwhacking or cross-country skiing through the woods, that's not an impact. It's not some positive activity taking place.
What about disc golf?
What did you just say?
What about disc golf?
Yeah.
Which can be done without any installation of any equipment, but it certainly-
You need the whole thing, the pole-
No, no, not necessarily.
Oh?
No, you just give them a target.
Yeah, in some cases, it's the people playing say, okay, you got to hit that tree.
It's gonna be hard to prevent that.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
But is it allowed?
I would-
I'm just trying to say, once you put together a list, people love lists, and what they're doing is not listed, therefore that's bad.
Right, and to Roger's earlier point, it's easier to loosen things than restrict them.
And I, that's not something I would lose sleep over. Now, if somebody wants to throw a disc, get a tree.
Well, I mean, you could list forever. I mean, you could go geocaching and, you know, all sorts of-
There's any number of activities. Those are things I would consider passive recreation-
Right.
But this doesn't, this only says trails for passive use. It doesn't say passive recreation.
Yeah, but I mean, walking your dog is passive recreation, but I don't think we're saying you can't do that.
But you can have hiking trails.
Yes.
That can be a different use.
I'm bringing this up not to be stubborn or obstinate. It's in the zoning regulations. So if all of a sudden Vaughn and Roger are neighbors, and Vaughn doesn't like Roger's dog, this doesn't arguably say you can walk your dog in the conserved land, and there's a zoning complaint and it becomes a thing. I have to switch hats from being creative help support, if you will, to this is a zoning regulation. So somebody, I'm not saying it would go anywhere, but this is a pretty curt list. And I don't think that's what the board's trying-
A curt list or-
Very curt, yes, short.
Yeah, okay.
I get all of the-
But if you're the property owner, you get to go out and wander around on the property. And in your interpretation, you can't walk out your front door under these regulations.
Oh, no, that's not true, because that's not in the conserved land.
All right, once I get out of the conserved land, you can't-
Can't walk.
You can't walk down your driveway.
Can't walk unless you're in a trail, yeah. I'm not saying it's a bad list, I'm trying to say, think about it before it goes to print. So if there's something else that the board generally doesn't have any concerns with.
Where do we end up with swimming pools? That wouldn't, that's a structure, so that would not-
Correct, or septic, and that was a topic to circle back to.
Or tennis courts, so that's out, right?
But you can have your tennis court and the swimming pool or your paddleboard court, just not in the open space.
Conserved land.
Yeah.
Maybe you're better off to decide what's not allowed.
That's, but that's not the way the zoning ordinance works, it's permissive.
It's a matter of coming up with the right term that encompasses whatever it is that we want to encompass. It's going to be a challenge to ride the edge there of what we want and what we don't to come up with the proper term to describe it.
I like passive recreation use.
Well, going back to it, it may not hurt to have an introductory phrase as to what conserved land is. Conserved land is those lands where no structures, in accordance with 175-175, or those things outlined in recreational use, et cetera, et cetera. So then basically, you give some guidance with the list, but you're not beholden only to the list.
You just have to define what structures are.
Well, it's defined already, unless we're going to change that too.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think we want to change that.
Well, I mean, where was leach fields in the structures?
Structure.
Yeah, it's a structure.
Well, interesting, okay, interesting play. It does not say septic, it says leach field.
I'm sorry, it says what?
Leach field.
Let me get back to structure, hold on.
Or did it say septic tank?
It says septic system. So the septic system is a structure.
Is a structure.
I mean, to a point where-
So where are we with the septic system? You're shaking your head.
Septic system is a structure.
That is a structure, okay.
It is a structure and therefore would not be permitted.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Well, to Roger's point from an earlier meeting, it also, your definition of structure also says a driveway is a structure, because it has a fixed location on the ground.
I think I said a parking lot was a structure.
Mm-hmm. Well, a park, yeah, a parking space, parking lot, and deck, yes.
And a path is a fixed location.
I'm glad somebody else made the connection.
Can you just come up with a brief list and bring it back?
I can come up with lists all the time, I'm trying to get a sense from the board of what you're trying to-
Well, I think we've given you a pretty good sense, haven't we?
I think we have a good brief list. And for doing conservation easements, I need, forest management, well, if the conservation easement, you need to have a forest management plan, but trails for passive, that's fairly standard, snowmobile trails, that goes in there. There is a list of what you can't do, but that usually suffices for a conservation easement, which is obviously more-
Restrictive.
Restrictive than what we're talking about. But you don't get into big interpret questions. You know, if the guy's riding this dirt bike, that's a violation. If he's walking the dog, that's not a violation.
Correct, but this is conserved land, not a conservation easement, so if the intent-
No, but I think there are parallels here in that, you know, we should not be wordsmithing this beyond what is needed.
So Tav, if you could come up with a list based on this discussion, just to summarize it for the board and put it in print form, and then we could all review it and perhaps continue this discussion at a later meeting.
Right, and that would be-
Perfect.
The definition of open space.
Or conserved land.
Or conserved land.
Yeah.
Okay, and then what about the density issue?
So, yeah, there's the three things we're talking about here is, the first was the goals, the next was the definition of conserved land, and lastly, the calculation, which would include the density. And I think that's a much more involved discussion. I'm not sure that we're going to be able to resolve it or even have much productive discussion here, because it's such an involved formula.
Well, maybe we should look at the state's recommendations and everybody come back with their own-
Sure.
Interpretation of that.
So Tav, if you could share that with the board?
Already done.
Thank you. And then we can come back with our thoughts on it at the next meeting.
And if I sent the wrong thing, Vaughn can correct and I'll find another one and send.
I'm sorry?
If I didn't send the correct one, I found what DES calls the model conservation subdivision, I sent that, but if there's another one, then I'll send that.
I'll look. There's a, it is www.des.northamshire.gov/organization/division/water.
I'll follow up with you.
I think that's the innovative land use planning, which when I went to find it, they told me the page couldn't be found, but happily I had the title and when I plugged that and it came up.
I'll get some more information to board members.
All right, so let's-
For the density issue.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
So let's conclude the conservation subdivision discussion for this evening.
Well, do you want to do a couple of things I hope everybody can agree on?
Okay, go ahead.
On section 175-152E, I think we should have the title, "Concept Plan." All the other sections have headings or have titles, and it says, "A concept plan depicting." So I would like to insert those two words after E.
Gotcha.
And on H yard, I guess another issue we need to discuss is the setback in the yard requirements, but at the start of that, I believe it should read, "All buildings and structures shall be set back." And I think if we're going to go from the pavement, it needs to be 30 feet, not 20 But there's also the question then, if you do that, the town's never going to take over the roads, which, but that-
So, just following along, would that say, H yard requirements, period, all structures shall be set back, colon?
Yeah, H1, at the end of that, all structure, buildings and structures shall be set back at least, whatever we decide on.
Okay, I see that.
We used to have 20 feet, but from what?
Yeah.
Well, it used to be 25 feet from the right of way or 30 feet from edge of pavement, whichever is greater.
I'm okay with that.
Want to go back to that?
Well, and our town ordinance doesn't allow you to have two structures within 20 feet of each other?
This is just from the road.
No, no, I'm talking about other setbacks.
Well, there might not even be lot lines in one of these.
Right.
I mean, the next one-
So it's just the road?
Yeah, I mean, at minimum distance in H2.
Oh, yeah.
And I would take out the second, be maintained, just the way it flows.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Roger?
Under H2, it says a minimum distance of 20 feet shall be maintained between buildings on separate parcels and between buildings on the same lot. I would get, right now, it reads be maintained between buildings on the same lot.
I'm not sure what he just said.
So a duplex is one building?
I mean, that's-
Correct.
No, nobody, yeah, okay.
Getting it down.
And multifamily buildings, one building.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not dwelling units, it's buildings.
Tav, I'm trying to give you time to catch up.
Oh, go ahead, you're all right?
Okay, but H1, all structures shall be set back at least 20 feet. That's from the front property line, does everybody agree with that or not?
I thought that just changed to all buildings and structures shall be set back a minimum of 25 feet from the right of way or 30 feet from the edge of pavement.
But that-
We're adding.
But why would we do that when, I mean, don't we usually do it from a property line?
Yes, there might not be property lines in the conservation subdivision. The property line could be the outside wall of the building.
Okay.
I think what you get into here is that there may not be a right of way for the road.
Well, that's another, I mean, I don't want to cut you off, but that's a whole nother discussion. If you put, if it's not a road, what is it? Because we currently allow only three homes to be accessed off a driveway.
I think it's a road.
Yeah, I mean, it's-
Well, but it says all roads have to be built to town road standards, which is a 50-foot right of way with a road in it. So if we're going to change that, we have to change how we get there in this. And then we can re-decide what- change how we get there in this. And then we can re-decide what the setback's going to be.
And then that would affect whether the town's ever going to take over the road. And one of the issues is, it's always going to be a private road until it has major road problems, and all of a sudden, it joins the list of roads that were never going to be town roads, that now are being asked in town to take over. And if you make it too short a distance, then people are backing out into the road if they park in front of their garage.
Okay, good. So you're going to prepare something for us next time, right? So can we move on now?
Roger, are there any other points you'd like to make this evening?
Ah, that's it.
Okay. All right, so let's conclude then the conservation subdivision for this evening. The next item is multifamily housing discussion. And I'm trying to remember what we discussed in the pre-meeting.
Well, we thought that at the forum that we had, that putting multifamily in each district.
Yeah.
That would be a really good thing to do, except I know that creates a problem with the ordinances, because it requires quite a few changes, but still, it seems like the best way to go.
It can be worded as one question. So, for example, are you in favor of moving multifamily as a land use, or amending the following zoning districts to include multifamily as a permitted use as follows? And then it would say, multifamily housing per section blank. So it's just one article that would affect all of the zones, all of the zones that are outlined.
Just for the public's benefit, so they understand what we're talking about, we had some proposals to the previous warrant articles that were defeated with regard to changing the way multifamily was referenced throughout the ordinances. So the difference here is to leave the multifamily as it's presently written, but to have some reference in each individual zone pointing to the multifamily, so that they would be aware that that is applicable. So it's not trying to change any of the regulations, just to provide some clarity to people reading the ordinances, so they would know where to look to find the multifamily.
I mean, presently, the permitted uses do not list multifamily as permitted uses in the same districts where the multifamily ordinance lists those uses.
Yeah.
And the multifamily ordinance, in my opinion, was intended to list where they're permitted, and we're just trying to bring the permitted use section in sync with the multifamily.
So I can draft something that is representative of this discussion back. I will include in there where there are certain zones that say multifamily is a special exception use, which doesn't necessarily correlate with the later section, and the board can discuss that.
Okay, so that'd be fine. If you could draft something and have it for the next meeting, then we can all review it.
Sure.
Okay, could we also deal with the issue in Bay Street in Wolfboro Falls, where it says residential apartments not permitted on the first floor, restrictions established by the multifamily provisions of this Part 1? I mean, that isn't even in that multifamily.
Correct, or in the Part 1.
Yeah, right.
So I can draft something up that would.
Yeah, that's a separate issue.
Yes.
But certainly, it's something we should address.
Yeah.
Well, remember, I did that little map thing, because nobody else drove around, and as you noticed if you read it, there's, that little rule doesn't apply anywhere. There is apartments on the ground floor everywhere in those zones. So you can't really say to anybody coming in new, "No, you can't, because your neighbor is." Does that make sense to you?
Might be worth some board discussion on that. I think that was put in there to preserve commercial space on the first floor.
Mm-hmm.
Not necessarily, not necessarily to prohibit residential use, or maybe it was, I don't know, I wasn't here. But I think the board needs to work through that. I've heard more people on the planning board say that we need to look at creating more housing opportunities than we are preserving commercial opportunities. So that would seem consistent.
But if it is in a zone when both are, are allowed, it should be either or. You know, it could be commercial now, and then the building sells, and then it becomes residential. Then it might sell again, and it might come commercial.
Well, I would suggest that we don't want to have necessarily an exhaustive discussion about it tonight, but if Tavis could come up with some proposed language, we could have it as a future discussion item.
Okay, but I really feel that the permitted uses in the Wolfboro Falls and Bay Street, and it's H, H and both of them, that it's not a, not an accurate statement. And so I really think that we need to deal with that, however we deal with it.
Mm-hmm. I agree, we need to deal with it. I just, I don't think it's, tonight's the topic, though.
No, okay, I just want to make sure that we deal with it.
Yeah, yeah. And that's the purpose of what we've just requested of Tavis, I think.
Well, okay.
That's enough homework.
Yes, I think so. The only other thing I'd like to bring forth, it's not on the agenda, but I'll just mention it for information, both for the rest of the planning board and for the public, there's been some discussion on the proposed or possible solar ordinances. And somebody was kind enough to share with me the Hanover New Hampshire Solar Ordinance, which is, as you can see here, very short. It simply, I'm not saying that we can use this word for word, but it simply says that solar energy systems are permitted as accessory uses in every district, subject to the height standards for established for each zoning district. So I think if we want to put forth a solar ordinance, it might be nice to keep it simple like this. And this, because it's permitted as an accessory use, it would be subject to all of the normal accessory use processes, such as going through a building permit and having the regulations that apply to other accessory uses. And that would control where it could go, how it could go, and what it would look like. So that may be a future discussion item, because I know you just heard about it now for the first time, but I just wanted to make you aware of it.
Okay, I just.
So the only thing I would say about that is, building height is 30 or 35 feet.
Yes.
Depending on the slope of the roof. Now, what's a solar panel?
You got those ones on the tree thing that are like that high when it flips up?
Could be on a hedge.
I've never heard of a use having a height limit.
I'm sorry?
I've never heard of a use having a height limit. It's an interesting way to phrase it, is all I'm pointing at.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm not saying that this, we could, as I said, we can't use this word for word, but it's interesting approach to try to make it simple.
I mean, to that end, I, I think it would be detrimental to the solar effort, if there is one, to consider them accessory structures, whether it's a solar tracker or something else, because of the limitations on the number of accessory structures you can have.
Yes.
Can we hear from Nancy? Can we hear from Nancy?
We haven't yet, but we can have public comment.
Oh, okay. Well, she's talking about her issue.
If there are no other comments, we'll open the public comment section of our meeting. Would anybody like to speak?
Takes a second.
Boy, are we modern.
Up there it is.
All right. I wasn't going to say anything, but, so.
Could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm Anne Blodgett.
Thank you.
And I live in Wolfboro. So I lived in a cluster, I've told you that before. In that cluster, one acre belonged to our house, the other acre belonged to the cluster, which was conservation land, and we were not taxed on it. So if you look at this from a tax basis, and you look at the definition under current use, could that help you with the definition? Because current use means you can't disturb the land. Sorry, Vaughn, no soccer fields or whatever, but, but I think conservation, the whole concept has gotten lost in your discussion, and you're talking about more of a neighborhood association with entertainment versus the reason people want to live in a cluster is to be surrounded by undeveloped, undisturbed land. So in Wolfboro, that open space is that taxed?
I don't.
It is, but at a lesser rate.
It's an assessing question.
Does it fall under like a current use kind of taxation?
You could ask assessing.
Yeah. But, but I guess what I'm saying is, maybe that's a more basic way to look at this, because once you start putting in a soccer field, it's going to be taxable to those residents, I would think.
Oh, we'll find out if it's.
And if you're not talking about having property boundaries, that's like a condo association, isn't it?
These, these things have similarities. It depends on how you define them. So you can have no land at all, under your, your house is just a condo, and I've lived in one of those in Manchester.
So is that what you're planning on putting forth?
No, it's, they get to define and present to us, the developer, we're not developers.
But that's a vastly different concept than, than I think what these conservation subdivisions, how they originated. And I guess the last time you discussed this, you talked about this is 65 acres, and that, you haven't talked about that tonight. Is that still in play?
I don't own it. I don't know what they're doing.
Okay, well, I mean, you just talked about it a lot, so I just figured now it's, it's something we're not talking about, so it would be interesting to know what the, you know, what's going on there.
I don't think 65 acres is a number that we're discussing right now.
I have no idea. No, the, the land you discussed at the last meeting, the parcel, is it 65? 56?
That's a particular parcel that came up for discussion. It has nothing to do with conservation.
Tavis referenced it as an example of, of a, of land that could be a conservation subdivision.
Well, there are hundreds of acres. There's 40, there's 60, there's 80.
No, no, I, he was specific, so I'm asking if that's still in play. And I'd also like to know if, Vaughn, you're involved in that, in that.
No.
In that, okay, thank you.
No, not at all, and it's not part of our discussion. I am a director.
It was part last week, or last meeting.
I'm a director at the camp school, and that parcel was sold.
I understand.
Yeah, so I have nothing to do with it.
Yeah, okay. Well, now you don't.
Right.
Yeah, although camp school's in a butter, right?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Hi, I'm Marge Hart. Just a few comments about the short-term rental. I do agree with Julie's comment about the difference of having personal versus investor, building short-term rental for a business and investment. I also would like to make sure that if somebody is putting a plan in to build a house and says it's for personal use, that we have some stipulation in there, and then it becomes a short-term rental. That is kind of a conflict, and we need to make sure that we address that in whatever we're talking about there. Noise enforcement is an obvious thing. You know, and you have, I was speaking to somebody yesterday who's got eight short-term rentals on the street. These houses are just going very fast, and the residential feel of that, with the parties going on after 11 o'clock at night, loud music and everything, you know, what are the residents' options for that? And I, I think I heard, Doug, you mentioned something about the planning board's not responsible for something. I think we just need to identify who is responsible for helping somebody that's got an issue with a short-term rental or what have you. It's important that people have knowledge about what they can do, so they're not forced into civil litigation to resolve issues. And I do understand there was a subcommittee in 2021, it's just about three years ago to the day, so I'd just say, you know, look at those minutes, reference those as input for that. And then just reference, the short-term rental discussion wasn't on YouTube, so people couldn't see it. There was a comment out on YouTube, so just to let folks know that. I don't know if it got recorded or not, but it was missed for people that were sitting in. That's it, thank you.
So that was, the committee was on YouTube?
Uh, no, today's meeting.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's on the town website, is it not?
No. The discussion, the beginning of this meeting.
TV thing. It's probably, it was probably recorded, it probably will be on YouTube. The live stream may not have caught up.
Yeah, I just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? All right. Last item on our agenda is, well, I'll close the public comment section, and then the last item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Unfortunately, we don't have the minutes available to us yet. I would hope we will have them at the next meeting. And if there's no other business, anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll do, I will.
Roger makes a motion to adjourn, I'll second. Hold on, favor?
Hi.
Thank you.